Okay. All right, good evening. Here to announce that we are starting this meeting first. Everybody please turn off your cell phones, cease campaigning. And... A couple of announcements. Well, I'll get to announcements in a second. First caller, we are now in the June 19th, 2019, 17 meeting of the county council. We call me and go over an hour call.
Timbaloo?
Here.
Barbara Brenner?
Here.
Eric Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Beard? Todd Duncan?
Saloon.
Here.
Is that Saloon?
Yeah.
Okay, and again, if you've got cell phones, turn them off. And if you're going to be coming and speaking with us and having your paperwork, make sure that you give copies to our staff here. But before that, please join me-
Which staff is that, sir?
Excuse me?
You said get copies to staff.
Excuse me?
I have paperwork to hand.
I'm trying to allow people to pledge allegiance to the flag. That is our next item of business, sir. Would you please sit down?
Who's the staff I get the paperwork to?
Sir, you have not even been listening to anything here. Department I said about stop campaigning, please? Okay. All right, would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as far as announcing that you're handing out paperwork to council members, if you are making public comment and you have copies of documents you'd like the staff to receive for us, please do report for our files.
Who's that? Who do I give it to? I have. Who do I give it to?
Would you please sit down, sir? You are not listening to any of our procedures in terms of how these meetings work. Thank you. I'm sorry. I won't. I will- Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I never use it before.
I got a five-pound sludge on my truck.
This is when you get up to speak at our hearing or an open session. It's not for you to get up and, you know, whatever you want.
I apologize. Actually, I made somebody cry back there. I'm sorry. No, the way the public comments will work is we have two public hearings, which you can sign up in the back for those hearings, and speak on those particular hearings. And then we have an open session period where you can speak to anything that's not covered by those items that are for the public hearing. So, our first item of business is minutes. So, minutes consent.
I'm of approval.
A minute. Motion of the second.
Can we do one, two, three?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to do one, two, and three separately? And then four, two, seven separately?
Okay. I still move through.
Okay.
Dan had sent an email before saying that if we were absent, we didn't have to do that because we're still documenting the process.
You can vote on minutes if you're-
You can vote on minutes, okay? That's fine. We'll put them all together.
Okay. We'll consider-
I'm staying.
All right, the motion is to consider minutes for, yeah, all right, these one, two, seven are consent, minutes consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I did have a second on that one.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure you did, somewhere.
Okay, that passes six to zero. All members in favor. Mr. Brown excused. All right. Our first... We're moving to public hearings. I will let you make a statement. It's really quick. Yes. Mr. Bird?
I just wanted to address kind of what was happening beforehand so that everyone understands that you're not allowed to campaign on public and government-owned land. And the reason for that is to stop incumbents like us from having an advantage and being able to use our position to be able to influence an election and have an advantage over a candidate that does not. And so, that rule was made for us, but it applies to all candidates. And it's a rule that all of us had to adhere to as we campaigned. And so, if you are a candidate and you are in the room, we ask you to not bring up your campaign or anything related to campaigning tonight because it is a state rule, I believe.
State law.
The...
All right, okay.
And we're asking everyone to adhere to it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Bird. And another rule of our procedure here is we don't take comments shouted out at us from the audience. We have a procedure where people can come up and talk.
I think it's time-
Sir, I think you might be needing to leave these chambers. The rules are fairly clear. We have a process for public hearings. We have a process for open session. I should not be engaging you. I won't engage you again. Okay, so our first public hearing, and again, if you had an opportunity to sign up, if you did not sign up, you'll still have a chance to talk. We have two public hearings. If you signed up on the wrong hearing, we'll still make sure you get a chance to talk. The first one is a resolution authorizing the use and establishing expenditures authority for the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District, revenue funds for Taiyi Drive's street scape corridor landscape maintenance, with the council acting as the governing body for the Port Roberts Transportation District, AB 2018-174. When you come up, make sure you state your name for the record. If it is something hard for us to smell, spell, smell, like Smith Jones or Bird with an I instead of a Y, please get that into the record. So, I'll go down the list again. If you mean to be testifying about the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District and your name's not called, you can still come up. First on the list there is Mr. Calder, Ken Calder. And each speaker gets three minutes, and the clerk will keep tabs on that.
All right. Ken Calder, private citizen of Point Roberts. The work that volunteers have been doing on Taiyi Drive for a number of years now is getting cumbersome for them. I don't have a problem with this tax money being allocated this way, the gas tax money to be determined funds, as they're calling it in Point Roberts. I would just, my only question is to make sure that it is just this only one approval so far, and every other one that comes up gets looked at individually. The one problem we have up in Point Roberts, the public hearings, when they get put out, I believe it's in the Bellingham Herald, the Herald does not get delivered to Point Roberts. The first notice that I have seen on this public hearing through any of the listservs in Point Roberts was today at about 3:45. Somebody sent in to PAWS interface the agenda minutes, agenda for tonight. So, I would ask that you look into possibly figuring out a way to get word out to people in some of your outlined districts, especially Point Roberts. Thanks.
Ken, a quick question. When you said you're okay with this one, but every other one?
If this one is only dealing with that money for Taiyi Drive right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. There will be more in the future. They're talking about trying to figure out other small projects that we need done. And hopefully, they'll all be the same process where they each get dealt with individually.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Okay, next up, Rihanna Allen, and after that, Scott Hackelman. Come on down. And then Jane Donaldson, Dave Lee. And you can take turns at either mic here.
Rhiannon Allen, I'm full-time resident of Point Roberts and the secretary of the Point Roberts Garden Club. I've been putting, oh, sometimes up to like 20 hours a week into the garden club. And one of our projects is the beautification and the maintenance of the street scapes in Point Roberts. And I am going to speak in favor of the amendment. The other people behind me will elaborate. But we have a labor shortage in Point Roberts. And it's become, as Ken Calder said, very onerous and cumbersome for us to maintain it. And we would really like to use some of the gas tax funds, the transportation district benefit funds, to hire an outside contractor to, you know, help us do things under the supervision of the garden club. We will still be buying plants. We will be doing basic garden maintenance, and we'll be doing overseeing.
Thanks. Thank you.
Scott?
Good evening. Scott Hackelman, I'm the president of the Point Roberts Garden Club. And this has been an ongoing project for more than 10 years. All volunteer-based. Everything has been from volunteer. If you haven't been to Point Roberts, then, or if you have, it goes, the area of Taiyi Drive that we're responsible for or have taken over responsibility for, goes all the way from Nielsen's lumber all the way down to the road that goes to the post office. So, it's a very long stretch of the primary boulevard that goes right up the middle of Point Roberts. It's lined with about 40 liquid amber trees and an equal number of mounds that have roughly 6,000 daffodils planted in them. And over the years, we've tried to create a situation where it's more self-sufficient and more manageable by creating adopt-a-mound programs, by getting volunteers and so forth. But the vast majority of the ongoing maintenance, such as weed whacking, grass cutting, some of the more basic, onerous tasks have fallen to us, our volunteers, to do. Over the years, like I said, it's been like 10 years, many backs and knees have started to go out in our membership. And nonetheless, we've generated quite a few funds to be able to hire out. And we've tried to hire, over the years, professionals to do the more of the grunt work, the more menial work. This has tapped out our funds too quickly because our primary use of those funds has been to buy soil, to buy compost, to buy plants because we still are maintaining and enhancing the boulevard and trying to create a situation where it's more self-sufficient. So, also, the project was originally started using transfer benefit funds some years ago, when the original trees were all planted and the old barbed wire fences were removed. So, we felt that it's appropriate that at least a very finite, very specific task be taken on, just of the maintenance of the grass cutting and so forth. And we have in our proposal a list of what those actual specific tasks would be. So, it would not be a hole in the bucket where, oh, it's not going to be purchasing of dirt or plants and so forth. That's still being done by clubs and volunteers. So, I thank you for considering this, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
My name is Jane Donaldson. I am the treasurer of the Point Roberts Garden Club and a full-time resident of Point Roberts. And I think Rhiannon and Scott have both outlined the issues and the situation fairly clearly. I am one of the few volunteers that have been working on it. And the number of volunteers is quite small, so there's a few of us doing quite a lot of work. And I really urge you to assist. It would be greatly appreciated.
I'm a full-time resident of Point Roberts. I'm one of the volunteers who has spent a lot of time clearing things out and mowing. And it's in my best interest that you folks have adopted this because I could do with a little bit less time spent on the street doing this stuff. Thank you.
I'm Arthur Reber. I'm also a full-time resident of Point Roberts. I've gotten very good at watching people garden and watching them do an excellent job. I support the proposal. But I just wanted to say two quick things that were sort of stimulated by Ken's earlier remarks. For four years, I chaired the Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee. And I kind of thought we had worked out an arrangement where everything that was coming out of the county, whether it was coming from the Health Department, it was coming from County Council, or it was coming from Planning and Development Services, would in fact be sent to Point Roberts, first through the interface, which is a batch mail list, or through the EPB, the electronic version of the All Points Bulletin. And I guess it was happening for a while, but from what Ken says, apparently, it's sort of drifted away like a mound of flowers that isn't tended carefully. It grows weeds and you can't see it any longer. So, I would love it if council could find some way to reestablish that process because that's how we find out about things. Okay? Thanks very much.
Arthur, what was the first service? You mentioned two, the EPB, and then what was the?
Interface?
What was the interface?
Well, it's changed. It used to be called Point Interface. The woman who was running it stopped doing it. It was taken over by someone else. And it's now simply called PAWS, P-A-W-S, which stands for... What does it stand for? It's an animal rescue and animal support program so that they have a large batch mail list. It goes to hundreds of people, including many in north of the border. And it gives public announcements, garbage sales, meetings are being held.
How would we find it?
Boy, I bet you if you just Google PAWS, you'll find it. Or Barbara has my email. So, email me, and I'll tell you how to get to it. Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
My name is Jeff Christopher. I'm the current chair of the Point Roberts CAC. I want to just support and recognize the excellent work that Brian Walker, who's sitting back over there, and his colleagues at Public Works have done on this. And I want to tell you that our committee has unanimously endorsed this project. I think that things that Mr. Calder said are very well taken, both points. One is, and I take some responsibility for the communication elements, so I will certainly look into that and follow that up. The other thing that he mentioned, which is also very apt and very correct, and that is every time that there is a TBD fund expenditure being proposed, it'll be done piecemeal, one at a time. There'll be nothing gained together. We'll consider each on its own merits. One other thing, very quickly, in committee a couple weeks ago, a council member, Brenner, added some value to the argument by suggesting to our organization, work with Public Works in pricing out a sidewalk so that our residents and guests could truly enjoy the fruits of the garden and of the garden club's labor. This was discussed with our Point Roberts CAC committee, full committee, in our June meeting, was very favorably received. And we've asked Brian to quarterback this, and we'll report back under separate cover and due course. So, thank you very much for giving us consideration this evening.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, the public hearing is still open for this item on Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this? All right, I will close the public hearing on this matter. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Brenner?
Who's here from, I guess, Public Works or something? Come on down, please. I'm going to put you on the spot. We had a presentation, and I was extremely supportive. And this is not what the presentation said. This says it's to, for somebody, contractor, to perform the necessary specialized landscape maintenance work to care for ornamental flower beds, shrubs, and street trees. I thought it was to do the weed whacking and mowing and keeping it so it's, people can see where they're going and stuff like that. And I specifically asked about the flower beds. And that was not, in fact, Scott, I mean, he's kind of turned me around because what he said is what I support and what I thought, but it's not what's in here. And I don't support using transportation benefit money for ornamental stuff. I support it for keeping the area maintained so that people can walk or see and don't get, you know... But daffodils aren't going to get in people's way of seeing. So, I just want to know, that was, we had this chart up there when we had our presentation, and it said very specific things. And it never said to care for ornamental flower beds. And I said that was something I didn't think belonged in a transportation benefit district. I do think that if we did what Scott suggested and we do the regular maintenance, which doesn't take a special landscaper to do mowing and weed whacking and things like that, that there would be the ability for people up there to do, take care of the ornamentals at the same time. But I'm not supporting what I see here, and so I'm in a quandary.
So, Brian Walker, Wacom County Public Works. To answer your concerns, it's going to be a combination of maintenance activities up there. The, from the county's perspective, our maintenance is to continue to provide site distance, clear zones for pedestrians walk through there.
Totally.
Exactly. That type of maintenance would include tree trimming and, you know, lawn mowing and such.
Mowing, weed whacking. I'm fine with that.
The garden club, then, as a joint venture in this maintenance, they're going to be continuing to maintain some of the more ornamental-type beds. And I do have a copy of that. If you'd like me to put that back up, if you want to see that diagram on screen?
Well, I would like it to be as part of the record that, I just want that... I don't mind it saying necessary specialized landscape maintenance work, period. I don't, it's not, I don't believe under transportation benefit monies, it's our job to care for ornamental flowers unless they're the kind of thing that overgrow and doesn't sound like... And what I saw out there, when I've been out there, it isn't what it is. So, although I'm totally about the mowing and the weed whacking and maintaining the trees, also taking care of the trees so they don't overhang and stuff like that. But I'm not for this other part.
Yeah, so in order, looking at that diagram in detail, you will see that there are areas that are designated for garden club member maintenance, and then there are areas that are designated for maintenance underneath a contract by a private contractor that would be paid for by TBD funds.
Well, I see that, but it says that it's going to be used to care for ornamental flower beds. And even shrubs, because they can get overrun and take over too. But I just, this is not what we, that's not what our discussion was.
So, the definition of ornamental, then, would be flowering trees, flowering shrubs?
This says flower beds.
Flower beds, yeah. So, a flower bed would be topsoil that includes all kinds of different flowering, well, flowering shrubs, and...
I didn't say shrubs. The shrubs are there, and it doesn't say shrub. It says ornamental flower beds. It's the explanation. I'm sorry, but it's an important point to me.
Yeah, where are you referring to?
Page 332 of our packet, but it says background and purpose. And I was very surprised to see that last sentence because of our discussion and what it was about.
Underneath the memorandum that would have went to council?
Memorandum dated May 17th, 2018.
Under background and purpose, the last sentence. And I know we need to do, we need to maintain the trees. I have no doubt, you know, keeping shrubs trimmed, but it was very, it was told to me very clearly it's not about caring for ornamental flower beds. And I did think that was going to be something that the community up there was going to take care of.
I think it's in the definition of ornamental there. The, Wacom County's maintenance regime would be from right-of-way to right-of-way, backside of, edge of roadway or backside of curb would be to come in and put in low-maintenance grass and mow it.
And that's fine, too, yeah.
So, in doing this, and the handout that was presented in introduction and the Public Works-
The chart.
Yeah. I do have a copy of that. I did not bring copies for all council members tonight, thinking it would already be in record underneath the discussion of Public Works. But through that, it does show different areas that garden members will be maintaining, and those are the daffodils and things. The areas that they're looking at getting a maintenance contractor up there would be for the grass mowing, the weed whacking, the tree trimming, and then the general removal of weeds.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with that, but that's not what this said.
Mr. Bird?
I'm wondering if we just make an amendment on ornamental flower beds and then leave shrubs?
Yeah, I would even say, fine. The necessary specialized landscape maintenance work to, for shrubs, street trees, and any other vegetation-
Do we have an amendment?
Let me just run this out. Okay, yeah. I'll do it as an amendment.
Amendment, who?
To just remove to care for ornamental flower beds. That is, I brought that up when we talked about it.
If I may, I do have a copy of that. May I approach and hand this to you?
Sure. I don't know if this was, the one I saw didn't have pictures on it. It was just-
Okay, but as far as process, so the motion was made by whom? And who has to?
I made the motion.
Mr. Buchanan, do you need to approve the amendment?
And trimming back blackberries, absolutely.
Depends if she's doing a formal amendment. A formal amendment needs a motion and a second.
Okay, I made the motion.
You made, the amendment was to eliminate?
To just eliminate that, to care for ornamental flower beds. This is exactly, the work zone legend is exactly what I-
Just bigger picture, if you prefer to have that.
What?
This is the bigger, I handed one with two.
Okay, well, somebody else can look-
That's the pretty one. You want that one?
Oh, the pretty one.
So, we have this proposed amendment. It's been seconded to-
I'm going to fix my amendment.
But, yeah, you're deleting something from the memorandum.
I'm removing, I removed my amendment, and here's my new amendment. It's going to be, at the end of that sentence, it would say, specialized landscape work for mowing and trimming grass, cleaning and raking the area, clearing and weed cutting, and trimming back blackberries. That is so fine with me.
Okay, we have an amendment. The amendment has a second by Mr. Bird. Anyone want to speak in favor of the amendment? Other than the... I will speak against it because I thought we covered this on committee, and I thought it was consistent with the RCW's use for these tax dollars. But any further discussion? Mr. Sidhu?
I think the garden club is very active club. Only thing I see is that they, due to aging volunteer base, they're looking for some assistance. I'd rather leave it to the club and the county to decide who does what. It's really micromanaging that, or did you touch the flower? Or did you touch the grass? You know, to me, the county and the garden club responsibly can accomplish this task. I would just leave it at that.
And Ms. Brenner, then we can dispose of this.
Yeah, that sounds really nice. It's just not the intent of what the transportation benefit, it's supposed to be about transportation. And when you can't see places and they're, you know, it's bad for traffic. It's bad for a lot of things. That does not have anything to do with caring for ornamental flower beds. I mean, it's a great idea, but I don't think that's what that money should be used for. And if you make me have to vote against it, I will. But I don't want to because I totally agree with what Scott had said was the intent of it.
Mr. Bird?
I have two things I want to throw in there. The first being that I agree with this thought process of Ms. Councilmember Brenner's. In thinking it through, if the county is maintaining the basics out there so that we have nice sightlines and the shrubbery looks nice down that kind of, that drag, I think that's great. If the community wants to get together and spruce it up and make it look even better by adding flowers and flower beds that they're going to maintain further at their cost and their time, I think that is great as well. And I think that's a simple separation for us. We'll do the general maintenance. If they want to spruce it up, that's on them. The other thing I would like to know is, who is the Point Roberts Transportation Benefit District governing body? Is that us? Or, I mean, that's a big word there. Is that us?
It is us.
Yeah.
Okay, so for clarity, then, we're going to approve this every year. This is the way I'm reading this, correct? This shall be established for future resolutions requesting budget authority from us, so for years beyond 2018.
That's if we add more. I think that would be if we add more.
Yeah. So, I just want to clarify, this is only for this year. We're not, it's not in perpetuity.
I don't-
May I add to that, to clarify? You folks are vote, are approving a resolution for two points. The first is the authority to spend the transportation benefit district funds on said purpose. And the second is to approve budget for the 2018. You're correct in that we will be back in front of council for the approval of the 2019 budget to continue with maintenance.
So, at the moment, we have the amendments that proposed by Councilmember Brenner. Ready to vote on that?
Is there a second?
There was a second, Mr. Byrd. Okay, hearing no more discussion. All in favor of the proposed amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
No, that fails two to four with Byrd and Brenner in favor and remaining council members, except for Mr. Brown, opposed, Mr. Brown excused. So the main motion then, I will get, is still on the floor, which is approving this resolution. Ms. Brenner.
Well, I just think it's really important, there are so many transportation-related issues that are life and death issues, and I have, I feel like we have, we owe it to the people up there to maintain the area, to keep it from being overgrown or something that would get, would interfere with people walking or, or riding. I don't want to, I just don't think this is one of the purposes. I think it's really nice, but I don't think it's the purpose, and it really goes against my nature to, to kind of use something for something it was not intended for.
Mr. Byrd.
All right, two more things. So I'll, I'll be voting for this, this time around, because the community does support it, those that showed up tonight. But I want to be careful that we're not setting a precedent where we're going to get a bunch of future projects coming in that pertain to gardening around the roads versus using this money for roads in the future. So this is a one-off, I'm okay with, but if we start seeing a whole bunch of additional requests for additional spend for these type of issues, I will be voting against them. And the other portion of that is that I think that, based on what I've heard from the group so far, which is that Point Roberts is not getting good communication from the council on what issues are coming in front of us. I don't know if the entire community agrees with this, or if it's just the number of people that know that it's here today. And so I think for anything that is coming up in the future, it's imperative that we communicate really effectively with that area so that we can get everyone who's interested to come and speak, and not just those that know about it.
Anybody else need, like to speak to the motion? Hearing no more. This is a resolution, so that, oh, it is a roll call vote. It is a roll call vote, okay. I will, then, we ready to vote?
Okay. Mr. Blue?
Yes.
Ms. Brenner?
No.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Byrd? Bird? Sorry.
I was...
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
And that passes, one, two, five, two, one, with Ms. Brenner opposed and Mr. Brown excused. Okay, and I would like to thank the folks, I think we all would like to thank the folks from the garden club and from Point Roberts for coming down and the work you're doing on that. Our next public hearing is on an ordinance adopting amendments to the Point Robertson Wiser Lake LAMIRD requirements, Lamred, which is limited areas of more intensive rural development. AB 2018-177, and on the public hearing for that, I have two people sign up. And again, if you did not sign up and you still want to speak, there will be time for that. You have three minutes, so come on down. The two names I have, Russ, I'm afraid of, and Ruiyan, is that even close? And Ken Calder. And again, if you didn't sign up, you still have a chance to, so come on down. Russ?
Hi, Ian. Regarding the proposed ordinance...
Can you pull the mic a little closer to you? Thanks.
Regarding the proposed ordinance adopting amendments to Point Roberts and Wiser Lake Lamred requirements, speaking specifically to the Wiser Lake Lamred, I'd like the council to approve the amendments proposed by the Waukam County Planning Commission at their meeting on the 26th of April, 2018. I've been an employee of Skolton Roofing as their CFO for the last 40 years and a partial owner in the property known as Skolton Short Platten Number One. I feel that businesses need to be able to make plans and make reliances on those existing ordinances. The planning commission has recommended that the maximum building sizes for storage and warehousing remain as they exist in the current Lamred. Paragraph 21 notes that fabrication and manufacturing basically did not exist or was not listed in the Lamred prior to 1990, but since my employing, employment in Skolton Roofing in 1978, I can confirm that manufacturing and fabrication did exist at that site. Waukam County staff has proposed a reduction in the square footage of the storage and warehouse uses, which to me is a disservice to the people that have already made reliances on those existing ordinances. So in recap, I'm in favor of adding the manufacturing and fabrication square footage and keeping the storage and warehouse square footage as the commission has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Strong?
Ken Calder. Again, we, in Point Roberts, there is PAWS interface, which was mentioned. There is also POINT interface. The one was one originally, people disagreed, it got split up into two. There is the AllPOINT Bulletin, the electronic version. There is also a sign at the corner of Gulf and Taiyi, one of our main intersections, that is one of the stores right down the street, Fuel and Pantry. They post any public info that people want to get out there for free. So I'll work at getting all of those emails to you, the contact for those services, and send it to all council members and the deal. As far as the, the Lamred, haven't had time to research anything, so I don't have anything to say about that. Thanks.
I could say, this, these comments are on the Lamred issue and non, comments not related to these public hearings, anything is available for open sessions. If anyone would like to say anything else about the Point Robertson Wiser Lake Lamred requirements, come on down now. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What are the wishes of the council? Ms. Brenner?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Oh, the, I move approval of the planning commission version, which I was, which said, which said this was it. So I just wanted to make sure. It's the planning commission version.
Let's make sure that that's what's in our packet and that's what Mr.
Well, it said it is.
Buchanan has seconded.
That's what I was seconding, correct.
Okay. Yeah, the, Mr. Byrd?
I, yeah, I want to make sure too, because in page two or 344 of our packet, it says reduce the maximum building sizes for the storage warehouse uses. And I thought that that was staff version was where we were reducing or taking away from one and adding to the other.
But then if you read, and somewhere it said, they didn't put it in there again because this is the, the planning commission version.
Yep, just to be clear, point of clarification, Mr. Brisonius, we are dealing with the recommendation that was approved in committee by the planning commission.
Correct, that's Exhibit A on page 352 of your packet.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? All right, this is a roll call vote, so, ready?
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Heather Byrd?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
St. Paul Cahoo?
Yes.
Tim Blue?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes six, zero, with Councilmember Brown excused. That now moves us into our open session, which is everybody's opportunity to speak about anything they want that's not related to those last two public hearings. And while we might have been commenting about campaigning in the chambers, this is open session, this is free speech, you can say whatever you want for three minutes, and you will be reminded at two minutes and 30 seconds when you're approaching that three-minute mark. So, and you don't have to be signed up, just line up and take turns and...
Just give me the whole stack, I'll pass it out for you.
No, you cannot.
Ken Calder from Point Roberts, about the garbage ordinance that was passed a couple weeks ago. State, the, the info I just gave you shows the provider's gross income. The, then the next line is the minimum that he'll receive from the fee and his other sources of income that he had last year, totaling quite, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars there, which is, minus his gross income last year, takes it down to a net increase of $362,000. This, it's a crying shame what's been done to Point Roberts without looking into financials and, and everything else. I fear for the rest of the county if this is what's going to happen there. If just the mandatory recycling was put on to every property, $147,000 and change, with an increase over his $18,000 of last year of $128,000, he only had a shortfall of $9,400, and nobody looked into his books to verify that. As far as, I brought, I submitted a petition at the June 6 public hearing, 364 signatures, 200 of them being year-round residents and/or registered voters, 164 seasonal. We only worked for maybe three days to gather all these signatures, and it isn't even the peak season for all the seasonal people. And we didn't really canvass. We set up in, in one location in front of the liquor store for a day and a half, and I went up to the transfer station and got 60 signatures when they were open. 60 out of 65 people signed that petition that wanted to keep their self-hall ability. And this ordinance restricts the, us to being saddled with this provider that hasn't shown any initiative in the, in the first seven years that he's run the business, to try and make it a greener, other, greener community, other than mentioning that he wants to make it a greener community. Of our committees up in Point Roberts, the Point Roberts Chamber of Commerce consists of the, the five board members. One is the provider. The second is his girlfriend, who's a board member of Freedom 2000, parent company of Can Do. Then three other business owners in Point Roberts. I'm a member of the Registered Voters Association. I'm here on my own behalf, not as a member, or not speaking on behalf of the registered voters. Our board was split, so we didn't sign a letter of support. At the Taxpayers Association meeting this past Wednesday, they started talking about a wish list, hoping that, that some of the board members were wanting things that weren't covered in the ordinance.
Time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Jim Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N. First, I want to thank the council for having Lehigh Low Income Housing Institute up today. I hope you enjoyed the presentation, because everything Homes Now has done, all our plans is based directly off what they do. Our rules are based off what they do. We've sent, I think, all of you our packet of what we do. So if you look at what Lehigh does, that's what we want to do. One thing I do, I know you're going to vote on an ordinance tonight, and in Section C, Paragraph Four, it talks about fences, and the, we have no problem with fences. As a matter of fact, Homes Now demands fences. If we built it on our own and it wasn't in there, we'd put fences. We do have a problem with the site obstruction fences as a safety issue, because the police can't drive by and see what's going on in there. The neighbors can't see what's going on in there. I can't drive by and see what's going on in there. And the homeless will feel like they're in a concentration camp. So I'd like to see that amended before it's voted on tonight. Besides that, I think you're all doing a great job. And maybe we get this passed tonight, and maybe next council meeting we get land. And if we get land in 30 days, we can have our tiny home village up. And if we got land to do both tiny home and tent encampment, in two weeks, we can have the tent encampment up. By the ordinance that's wrote, we can follow it by the letter. So, thank you for your work.
Thanks, Jim.
Hello, Lisa Pap, P-A-P-P, Bellingham. I'm speaking about the emergency and interim tent encampment ordinance that you folks are voting on tonight. I feel that it's a kind of a cruel irony when some of us are doing very well financially, some companies are thriving, some parts of the economy are thriving, property taxes go up, housing prices go up, rents are out of, out of line for most people. And the more that that happens, the lower-income people and the homeless people are struggling. Tent cities are not ideal. I'm sure all of us would agree that having people housed is preferable, but if the only dwelling that someone has is a tent, then a safe, secure, approved place for them to live is necessary. The sweeps and cleanups of camps, as you know, we well know, are expensive for the city, the county, taxpayers, and it's inhumane. So I really thank the council for their support of Homes Now. I've been fortunate to volunteer with them, and I hope you vote to approve the interim and emergency encampment ordinance. And also, ongoing, I hope you will continue to help Homes Now in finding some affordable land or finding ways to eliminate permit costs and other things, because I think the tiny homes idea is a great idea, and creating that sense of community is really important, even within the homeless community. They're our neighbors, too. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Amy Glasser, Bellingham, Washington. I want to start by thanking, thanking the county for taking up this issue. We've been obviously working for over a year now on trying to help people who are not in shelters at all and are living on the street, and I think this is the first step in making an ordinance that could actually help us to build. I think I'd like to add that as the committees continue on homelessness that are joint with the city and all other organizations, the continued discussion about a 200-bed shelter I think needs to be revisited, and I'm begging you to listen to professionals in the community who say that 200 beds of anything. I wouldn't want 200 beds of anybody living right next to me. And if you put people who have issues, problems, and their problems can be as simple as they lost their job and they're homeless today. It doesn't need to be mental health, it doesn't need to be anything. Anyone who is homeless is struggling. You put 200 people together and you have a recipe for post-traumatic stress flares, triggering each other's issues, it's just a bad, bad idea. The mission can't do everything. They do things great, they do things not so good, and then if you went to City Hall last night, you would hear from business owners that they do some things terribly. We ask you and beg you to continue to let Homes Now build our shower units in less than six weeks. We might that done. The housing that Jim is talking about can be done in no time at all. We can get at least 10, 20 people off the street by winter. We've already provided at least 47 showers to people. We've put in people, I believe, about 30 people in homes, whether it be getting them with family or housing or other shelter. We can do it. We're just asking for the ordinance, some land, and some support when it comes to hookups. We're behind the curb in Bellingham. We're way behind the curb. Everyone else has tent cities and tiny home projects, and they've got thousands and thousands of homeless. We only have about 1,000. We can fix this problem and then deal with people one by one to keep them in a home where we can fix the problem. Just look at other countries, they're all doing it, and they're not doing it with mega shelters. Thank you.
Hi, Doug Gustafson, Technical Director of Homes Now. I wanted to talk about three things on the ordinance surrounding temporary encampments and tiny homes. I noticed that under Section Five of the ordinance, it says that, that there's a hard cap on, it doesn't say a hard cap, but there is a hard cap on one 90-day extension for any temporary encampment with structures or tents. I suggested an amendment to allow for a longer time period for structures such as tiny homes, perhaps one or two years. And we, and with tents, 90 days is no problem, but just being able to extend it more than one time, because that's written in the ordinance that it can only be one time. So somebody can come to you guys later and say, hey, that it says in the ordinance only one time, you need to follow your own law. So allowing greater flexibility for you to be able to change things later as the circumstances permit makes sense to me. You might, for example, you might have a really great group of people that are, the neighbors love, that's not being, that the land's not being used for anything else, everyone's happy, yet it says only one 90-day extension, so you would have to tell them to leave, even though everyone around them is fine. So that's a theoretical thing that could pop up. Also, number two, it was mentioned in a previous council meeting that providing tiny homes does not house people in great enough numbers to make a difference. The other thing to consider is that when somebody moves into a tiny home, they don't live there forever. So in essence, any tiny home community is a renewable resource. People move in, they get back on their feet, and they move on to their own place. This helps to provide a vehicle to get people out of homelessness. Once it has helped one person, it can help another person. The more that you build, the more the scales up as a vehicle to help people get off the streets. Homes Now has proven that we can build tiny homes with community involvement, zero taxpayer dollars, that we can also manage a temporary tent encampment, as we did on City Hall for 18 days, and that we can provide services such as showers without violating any health, safety, or environmental... dollars, that we can also manage a temporary tent encampment, as we did on City Hall for eighteen days, and that we can provide services such as showers without violating any health, safety, or environmental laws or rules. In fact, our efforts have made the city of Bellingham and Waukam more healthy, safe, and a clean place, which adds value to the overall community. Of course, we've only been able to do this on a smaller scale because of the restrictions in the law, but we hope that you can do what you can to help us solve this vital issue with no taxpayer dollars.
Thirty seconds.
And with no risk to the county. We invite anybody to take a look at our work, whether it's to see the tiny homes on Lemmy or to check out the shower truck or any of the monthly homeless summits. I'd like to thank council members Barbara Brenner, Tyler Bird, Sat Paul Sidhu, Barry Buchanan for getting directly involved. I'd also like to thank Planning Director Mark Personias for coming out to Lemmy to take a look at the homes we've built so far. I hope we can find some land and make this happen, hopefully before winter, when it's going to be needed most. Thanks.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
Mike Kaufman, Whatcom County. Shooting babies. In the Cleveland area, we left off with the wealth of Cleveland, stripping Cleveland of its wealth and moving it and creating the suburbs. In the mid-sixties, the riots, the civil rights riots that took place, Cleveland had some of the biggest in the country that were going on. I graduated high school in nineteen seventy. That was the month that they shot the four students at Kent State University. Republican Governor Rhodes ordered the guns loaded with live ammunition. It wasn't some loner in the suburbs or in the place, it wasn't some kid that was bullied in school, it was the governor using the military and shot the white babies. And it was a mistake that the Republicans marked very clearly. You don't do that. And they almost lost the vote of Ohio. We look forward, well, from that. McNamara admitted later on that the Vietnam War was, in the end, policy was for corporate wealth and for Defense Department, and it was a poor man's war. Later, Cleveland kind of fought back, and they elected Carl Stokes, the first black mayor, to a major American city. Corporate wealth in America, or in Cuyahoga County, fought back and bankrupted Cleveland. It was the first major American city to go bankrupt. Cleveland then elected Dennis Kucinich at twenty-seven years old to run the city, and that's where he got his political start. In Cleveland at the time, the T-shirts, our tourist slogan said, "Cleveland, you gotta be tough." It was quite the joke in town as that went on. But as we look forward and we say, okay, as I look at military action, as they remove the Occupy movement from the Maritime Heritage Park in the middle of the night, when those folks were working with authorities to close that park, they sent the SWAT team in in the middle of the night to remove them. The Keystone Pipeline issue, that was originally going through the suburbs of Bismarck. When the suburbs complained there, they moved it down into the Indian Reservation in North Dakota and used strong-arm tactics and military tactics to close that protest down. I look at recently, if you look at the Philadelphia issue with the Starbucks, and they were talking about the police coming in and arresting the minority people there. To me, the thing that spoke to me about it was, here's a barista at a Starbucks calling nine-one-one, and the police came in and enforced corporate policy. I don't understand that. To me, that is the issue, and how we use our police force in our economy and what my tax dollars are doing to certain people. I'll say it and I'll keep saying it, I don't agree with that. And today at the border and the issue that we look at down there.
Time.
Corporate money is saying, why do we care? It's not the white babies we're dealing with, it sees other people. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
My name is Misty O'Loughlin, O-L-O-U-G-H-L-I-N. I am here to talk about the ordinance for the emergency tent encampments. I am a volunteer with Homes Now and a longtime volunteer and advocate for the homeless here in Waukam County. My research in Seattle and other encampments, Cincinnati, all over this country have shown that the encampments save money for the county, for the state on the sweeps that they're There shouldn't even be sweeps without an alternative place for people to go. The mission can take some people, but they also break up families and don't have places for women and children. The Agape Home has them. You can't go to the mission if you have a job at night because you have to be there just during sleeping hours. It saves money on prosecuting people for doing things like camping or sitting on the sidewalks, things that people shouldn't be in trouble for if they have no other place to go. It allows them to keep their possessions, to keep independence, to keep autonomy, and gives them some dignity and allows them to maintain themselves hygiene-wise and sanitation. People aren't going to choose to throw their garbage everywhere if they have a place to put it, they're not going to choose to use the restroom outdoors if they have restrooms available to them. People are doing these things out of desperation, and we would like to help with that. The tent encampments also concentrate the population so that they can better connect with services, so that outreach teams can reach them easier and know where they're going to find them, so that they can get on housing lists, so that they can be able to access the resources to get them into housing.
Thirty seconds.
The housing lists are long, but it's a start. It's better than nothing. We're not asking for money, we're just asking for space.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Bob Gay. I'm Business Representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local One-Nine-One. I'm here tonight because I have concerns with your Resolution 2018-015 and its impact that it'll have on our members, their families, and our entire community. And I would urge you to rescind this motion, the resolution. The resolution seems more than just the fossil fuel companies at Cherry Point. This council's proposed changes to the Whatcom County Code and the Comprehensive Plan is an attack on the economic development and job creation of our county. It'll create a chilling effect on the future economic investment, economic growth, and jobs. You know, currently, the economy's good. Local One-Nine-One continues to bring on new apprentices, you know, training our future workforce. But this is all on-the-job training, and it requires a vibrant economy, and it needs those industrial jobs to keep these people working. It's going to help secure theirs and all our futures, really. The Cherry Point Companies are not allowed to grow and make business decisions based on changing market conditions, they'll cease to be competitive, and the county will suffer the setbacks in job growth and tax revenue loss. Our Cherry Point Industries are critical to the economic health of Whatcom County. They provide over twenty-one-hundred family wage jobs. I probably spent over half of my working career in those Cherry Point Industries. You know, there's two-hundred million dollars a year in tax revenue and over a million dollars going out to charities, you know. So I just urge you to support Whatcom County industry and focus on policies that balance economic opportunity and prosperity with environmental stewardship, safety, and improvements there at Cherry Point. So, again, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair, I have a copy of my bio for each of you, so you know who I am and how do I proceed to get that to you.
Hand it to the clerk.
All right, a copy for each. Been campaigning in the great city of Bellingham for five days. I've talked to hundreds and hundreds of businesses, and my reception has been warm and welcoming and very good until I got to this courthouse around eleven o'clock. And I walked into the treasurer's office to do what I do all the time, which is, hi, Gary Franco, running for Congress, just want to leave that with you, read it, you leave, oh, can't take it. He wouldn't even take it or look at it. I thought, wow, that's weird. Well, to make a long story short, we had a breakdown in the courthouse, and they even called the police to have me arrested. And they harassed me for about an hour and a half in the foyer. So I want to be honest with you and say that I'm coming back tomorrow at eleven o'clock. I'm going to the foyer. If you have a state or federal law, I will obey it. Show me the law. If you do not, I don't care about your courthouse rule, I care about the law. My duty as a citizen is to obey the law. You show me a law that says I'm breaking that law by connecting with my citizens who are walking in and out of the courthouse and my public servants whose salaries I pay, not here, but in San Juan County, but the same thing, and you show me that law, I will respect that law, and I leave, I will leave. If you do not, show me a law that I would be disobeying, then I will be in that foyer at eleven o'clock, talk to your prosecutor, to pass out my brochures to people who come in and out. It's that simple. Show me the law, and I will obey it. If you don't show me the law, I will do what I believe is my right, constitutionally, both federally and statewide. That's all I ask. You've got a prosecutor, you have many folks working in government, great resources. Give me the law, black and white. No foo-foo, no discussions and debates, just the black and white law. I will respect it.
I think that's fair.
Thank you for your time.
That's a fair request. Thank you.
Monday, tomorrow, eleven o'clock. Okay?
One down.
Hello, my name is Adam Lambe. Last name is L-A-M-B-E. I'm here tonight speaking to you on behalf of my members. I'm a business agent for Labor's Local Two-Ninety-Two to talk to you guys about the concerns about this council's stated goals of changing the Waukam County Code of Comprehensive Plan to pursue unnecessary permit reform for Cherry Point Comprehensive and Waukam County Industries. The scope of what you are proposing is unnecessary because of existing regulations already in place. We're concerned that these changes will drive away good-paying jobs and damage Waukam County economy long into the future, sorry. There are many members of Local Two-Ninety-Two who've made their livelihood and their career working out at Cherry Point, myself included, who support their families and the community by the money we make out there. Cherry Point Companies are critical to the community and economy in Waukam County. They create over twenty-one-hundred family wage jobs that branch out into the community, buying things, spending their money that they make. Like Bob touched on, they contribute quite a bit of money every year to Boys and Girls Club and to other charities throughout the community. I urge you not to pursue any unnecessary permit reform of the industry of Waukam County. The implements of this proposed change to permitting in Cherry Point will send the message to companies that we're closed for business, that we don't want to grow our community. Thank you. Have a good night.
Hi, my name is Hillary Cole, and I live in Bellingham. I hope you had a chance to walk through that shower truck outside. It's fantastic. Okay, and there's some other things you may not know about. They have a community garden. This past monthly summit, homeless people were fed a healthy salad made from the lettuce and other vegetables grown in this garden. Homes Now needs land and an ordinance that lets them build tiny homes and encampments. We need areas where vehicles can park safely with services like water and toilets. You, the county council, have the opportunity right now to put Waukam County on the map to achieve what other areas are doing around the nation to help the houseless. With county land, Homes Now's Jim Peterson says that he can move services in place and have an urban rest stop, if you will, ready and running as short as two weeks. And as you know, looking at the shower truck, he keeps his word. Homes Now has proven over and over again, they deliver and are worthy of your trust. Lastly, now is the time to do this. Have these areas designated by an ordinance in place before the fall and the bitter cold and wet winter comes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Krueck, K-R-U-I-C-K. I'm from Maple Falls. I've been living in that area for approximately a year. And when I moved into my community, I was shocked at what I found, that there are homes that are in disrepair. There are all kinds of outlaw behavior going on. There's garbage, there's, it's just a neighborhood that is in decline. And I'm referring to the community that's called Paradise Lake Community up in Maple Falls. It's a serious issue, it needs attention, and there needs to be expectations for the people living in that area that, so similar to, and what I am proposing, that we need some kind of HOAs so that people living in the area know what the expectations are and know what the standards are that they're held to for living in that area. There's all kinds of problems that I've seen since I moved there that I wasn't expecting So I have more information, but I just wanted to come and speak before the council about the problems up there at Paradise Lake Community.
If you have more information, then you can give an email contact to the clerk on your way out.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you, everyone, very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Hello, my name is Jessica Radovich, R-A-D-O-V-I-C-H, Bellingham. I'm a counselor, a mental health counselor, and I've worked with people experiencing homelessness and marginalized communities, and also specifically do work in supporting people in healing trauma. And I'm also an artist who works on social justice projects, and just want to speak to my experience in relation to the temporary encampment ordinance. I just returned from Philadelphia. I was there for a month, working directly with people living on the street in self-created encampments. I was sent there to work on a project looking at this intersection of homelessness and the opiate crisis, which in Philadelphia has become a public health crisis. Philadelphia has a large homelessness issue, and one of the things that we know is that homelessness often intersects with high levels of trauma and poverty, and also intersects with high levels of addiction, too, and the two are related, they're related. And in Philadelphia specifically, I was sent there because Philly has, right now, the largest open-air heroin market on the eastern seaboard. So it was really a strange sight to behold, but people living in huge encampments on the street, self-created, not supported by the government or the city. So I spent the month there and learned a lot and was in direct contact with people living on the street. And right before I left, I found out that the city was going to do a sweep. And so it was the second sweep that they had done. The first one, people were living in a truly abandoned train yard, and they did a sweep and fenced it off. And this was going to be the second one. The city was offered counsel to try to build more relationship with the people living on the street, to poll the homeless population on their own needs, to explore alternative housing, and to mobilize high levels of basic need services. The shower truck is actually unbelievable. Philly doesn't have that, which is shocking to me. So I'm really proud that it's in Bellingham. It's truly a basic need that people will speak about. Instead, they chose to do a sweep, and it was the recycling of the same approach, which leads to the same outcome. And what we thought we would see was exactly what we saw. I watched the sweep from the internet for people who were streaming it for me, and people on the street were humiliated.
Thirty seconds.
They were traumatized and scattered, they had nowhere to go. Shelters are not preferred by everyone who's homeless, and there's community inside Shelters are not preferred by everyone who's homeless and there's community inside of, true community, relationships and values. One of the things we know about trauma is that relationship is vital to healing it, not just as a, as a platitude, but it actually rebuilds the brain structures that get severed in trauma. And so I just want to speak in support of groups like Homes Now and people who are willing to be in deep relationship with the homeless because it truly does heal trauma at its origins. Thank you.
My name's Craig Kasberg. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Title Vision. In the last five to six weeks, I've gotten to know everyone behind the Homes Now movement and I can personally attest that not only were they professional, resourceful and respectful, even leaving our premises better than we gave it to them when we lent our extra warehouse to them to build the shower truck. But most importantly, I've been just really inspired by all of them. They're doers who really believe to the bottom of their hearts that together as a community, we can end the needless and unnecessary suffering of our neighbors. And with the help of your vote tonight, that'll be one step in that direction. One thing I've learned through business and just my personal life is that sometimes the most impactful solutions are also the most simplest. Another thing I've, I've observed is that change gets done by people who passionately believe in the end cause. And because of that, because there will always be unexpected hurdles along the way. And I think one thing we could all agree on is that these guys' heart is in their cause and they're going to see it through no matter what hurdles and modifications need to be done along the way. Not only do these guys believe that by providing the basic needs for survival, that we can create a better community and a better world for that matter, but also a community with less ti, less crime, that spends less of taxpayer money cleaning up and handling these things how they are handled currently. They also believe that their model
Thirty seconds.
Creates a pathway for people on the lower end of the economic ladder to rise out of it. And I believe they've demonstrated that through their first two tiny homes. I was really impressed to learn they've already moved eight people out of homelessness, six of them who are already supporting themselves in their own apartments and paying for that on their own. I think this movement is going to be
Time.
Pounding as growth typically is. Thank you.
Hi, Marcus D. Stidham, S-T-I-D-H-A-M, Waukam County resident. Thank you all for all of your efforts. I do really feel, again, well represented by you. I'm here to really speak to community, that this Homes Now is a community, a community-based, grassroots effort from people who I have known for decades, some of these people, as some of the most, the biggest doers in, in Waukam County. And so I, when I saw it, I was like, what are they doing? I'm like, I want to be part of that. And man, did I ever want to be part of that. Man, do I feel swept up in that. And I hope you all will be in that with us. The shower truck is fabulous. I mean, it's not just a slogan, it just comes out when I say, these people come out smiling, full of hope and smelling like soap. So, you know, if you've had any doubts, if any of you have had any doubts about our ability to bring it to completion, fruition, our passion, you know, please, put that aside. This is a community partnership and we're asking to be the ones to, to, to help the community get started, to be the pilot program. Let us take the shot. We'll do it because we want to help right now. I have learned so much about compassion. I thought I knew about compassion until I met Jim Peterson, Amy Glasser, and I'm not even going to say all the other names. It's humbling. It's humbling. Come be humbled with us. Come, come clean a shower stall one day with us, you know, and do that with us too. It's, it's so rewarding. And just, just please, 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 help us get some land and make this ordinance work for all of us. And, and we're all going to be really proud of this later. Thanks.
Bird with an I.
My name is, good evening. My name is Stony Bird. I live in Bellingham. And I believe I'm allowed to say that I'm running for Congress in Washington's 2nd Congressional District as a Green Party member. But that's not what I'm really here to talk about. I want to speak in support of the temporary emergency ordinance that's proposed. I hope you pass it. I also want to mention, to sort of draw back from that ordinance and talk about the fact that the need for an ordinance at all is not temporary, it's not new, and it's going to be around for a while, probably years. We have structural problems in the economy. Wages haven't gone up in 40 years, basically, for most people, 40 years. In the meantime, the prices of the things they have to buy are skyrocketing. The number of jobs that are available increasingly is not as great as the number of people seeking jobs and the jobs that are available are minimum wage jobs. So the, the structure of the economy is failing. Our us, it is failing us, all of us. And other cities, other communities, take it on themselves to temper the effects of the economy on, in disrupting people's lives and breaking up families and ruining people's I don't know if you saw the wonderful exhibit that was on Prospect Street for about a month earlier this year about the city of Vienna, Austria, where, which is rated the most livable city in the world and where every person, every person has a decent place to live. And the way they do that, they've been at it for 100 years, is for the city
Thirty seconds.
And for nonprofits to own most of the housing. The city and the nonprofits own most of the housing. And the result is, everybody is housed. There's more to say, but it probably isn't time to say it tonight. But I, so I, but I want to emphasize the structural problem
Fine.
And the need for long-term thinking about all these questions, as well as this, as well as this interim temporary ordinance.
Sorry. And if there's anybody else who would like to make comments, come on down. Still open.
Name's Jennifer Mansfield, M-A-N-S-F-I-E-L-D, and I'm a Waukam County resident. I'm going to kind of go off of what Stony was saying here. Recently, I read an article by Professor of Medicine, University of California, and she writes, "Why are so many unsheltered homeless people on the West Coast? Homelessness is visible and a result of a higher proportion of people who are unsheltered." She asks, "Why is this occurring on the West Coast? The main reason: lack of affordable housing. People living without shelter experience the following: humiliation, isolation and terror because they don't have privacy or safety; no way to relieve themselves or maintain hygiene because they don't have toilets or showers; no way to prepare or store food and/or belongings because they don't have any place to store them; no space to sleep or keep safe, no beds; exposure to perpetrators of crime, physical and sexual abuse; exposure to high-risk behaviors for survival, drugs and prostitution; exposure to and exacerbation of communicable disease, again, no hygiene facilities; disruption with family, friends and service providers because they're constantly having to be relocated for survival. Lack of shelter becomes a form of societal displacement in which a person struggles to find a legal and safe alternative for occupying their living, breathing space. Often, people experience exploitation of their situation in the form of social prejudice and criminal punishment. Basic needs and requirements for survival in a society that uses capitalism as a means of monetary exchange places a burden on a person to sustain a modicum of income to achieve security. When this income cannot be sustained out of lack and/or loss, it compromises a person's ability and financial security and basic needs become difficult to meet. So the question is, do we consider housing to be a basic need and do we consider this to be a government priority? It's not just a capitalist society, but a society whose government foundation is a democracy and a republic of the people, for which we maintain our institutions and systems of management to reflect the needs of the people to reach optimum conditions of life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. Are we the people acting as policymakers and enforcers which deprive or punish people who are experiencing hardship? Are we abiding by principles that protect our constitutional rights?" The article continues to state that "The West Coast suffers from rising costs of rental housing, stagnant incomes for low-wage workers, and a decline in federal support for affordable housing." So we're dealing with rent costs, low wages and federal housing funds being cut.
Thirty seconds.
So I'm here to advocate for what we are considering navigation centers to help and assist people in form of encampments, temporary encampments, tiny homes, urban rest stops and permanent solutions for people to transition to permanent housing. I'll cut it short there, there's a little bit more, but that's okay. Thank you.
Switch off here.
Hi, I'm Lynn Allen and I live in Bellingham. Well, when I volunteered to help with Homes Now, I didn't know how close I was to homelessness, but I'm finding out. My rent was put up $375, I can't afford that. And the transition has been really difficult and my health has definitely deteriorated and my, I'm selling all, almost all of my possessions. And I'm getting amazing support from the volunteers at Homes Now, of course, and that's really helping to see me through. And I just want to encourage you all to notice that Homes Now is a, is really inspiring people to come and, you know, give themselves and organizations too. And it's a model for community spirit. And so I'm supporting Homes Now. Thank you.
John Campbell, just want to thank the Sikh community for coming down to Maritime Heritage Park on Sunday and providing their wonderful meal for our neighbors without homes. Those guys rock. They're, they're doers. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
I might run for county council. My name is Joanne Pattern, P-A-T-T-E-R-N. First, thank you all for listening to us and for most of you for helping us with everything that you do. We, I was here a few months back and we cheered you all on for doing so much more than down the hill. I think we all know what we're talking about because you know what else runs downhill? And they don't seem to respond except in a really negative, really negative way to our requests. And we would like to say, please, please follow through with what you said a few months ago that you would help us out and, help us, please. We're asking, we don't ask for money to the extreme that we're, we don't take money, what, 94 cents out of the dollar, is that what it is, Jim? Thank you very much. We, we don't put, he doesn't put money in his pocket, none of us do. And the majority of the people that volunteer for Homes Now work jobs and they, after they work jobs, they go and volunteer. They barely feed their families, they don't take time with their families, they volunteer all their free time. They have social security and they volunteer all. They give any money they have to Homes Now. Everything is given out of the goodness of their hearts all their time, everything. So this isn't like people have, it's everything they give to Homes Now. So this is a, a true out of the goodness of their hearts. And we don't have anything else except what we can ask you for. And businesses are coming out of the woodwork to give. So we're asking you, please, we just need some land, we need some help. And you're the ones, we really are asking, please, support Homes Now. They're awesome. And look out, out across the street, you see. It's awesome. Okay, please, thank you.
Half your jobs.
I hope you do go next year. Aaron Thomas, Ferndale. I want to do, echo almost everybody that's talked here about Homes Now, Not Later. In the fabulous work that you guys have done, thank you so much for, for doing that. You know, I come from a grassroots, part of helping our homeless out at Lummi. And, you know, it's thankless. It really is thankless work. But, you know, at the very end, the reward is seeing what the shower truck that we have out there, that you guys have created. Today, I saw one of our tribal members that was homeless, the very first tent that we knocked on, he graduated from, got his high school diploma today. And, you know, it's those kinds of things that are rewarding when you start doing this work. So I just want to raise my hands out to Homes Now, Not Later and Waukam County Council and some of you that have come out to Lummi and seen our, our tiny homes and the two shelters, I just raise my hands out to you as well. I wanted to speak real briefly on another issue. It's coming up really quickly. We've been having some issues with the non-Indian homeowners out on Hermosa Beach on Lummi Shore Road, just right by the, the tiny homes that you guys went out and seen. And what's happening is for, for decades, we've had this issue where non-Indians that live there, that have been living there forever, are claiming that that's their beach. And so our Lummi tribal members are going there to, you know, gather their, their resources there, you know, their clam dig or whatever, and they're told to get off the beach. And the real, their issue that's happening is that the property maps that they have are incorrect. And according to my sources, that, that those property maps were done back in the 90s and the county is the one that helped create those, those property maps. And they can show you that, that, this is my beach, look, it says right here, shows it right there. But the Treaty of 1855 and all the other documents after that prove that that's, when the tide is out, that's, that's our land, that's, that's our reset, the tide is, the table is set. So I really urge the, the county to look into this. I don't want to start a riot between two different groups of people, although we've been out there rallying too. So some of my family members and tribal members, we, we want to let them know in a peaceful way that this is our beach, that that's, that's the resources that our ancestors fought for and why we have the Treaty of 1855.
Thirty seconds.
So again, I urge you guys to look into it. Fourth of July is coming up really quickly and that's usually when it gets really heated is on the Fourth of July because everybody wants that, that prime spot. So, hi, Chukasiam, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing nobody else coming down for open session, I'm going to close the open session and I will point out that a lot of the comments having to do with the emergency ordinance, we have that on our agenda after we potentially burn through a lot of consent items here fairly quickly. So Ms. Brenner?
I move we go directly to that ordinance.
Second.
I was setting you up for that, thank you. Because we got a really exciting consent agenda coming out of the Finance and Administrative Services Committee. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move what is item nine on other items to, ahead of the consent agenda. And the clerk's okay with that? Okay. All, Mr. Bird?
Shouldn't we bump the interim up as well then? Do them at the same time? It's number two. It's just introduction? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, right now.
We have to do one at, one first.
Yep.
So we're okay with
But we could do that.
Moving the emergency ordinance to adopt zoning regulations for deciding establish an operation of temporary tent encampments to ahead of the consent agenda. That's the motion. We have a second, Ms. Brenner?
Discussion. I move that we change the
Let's move it first and then we can start doing that.
Oh, I thought, okay.
Got to move the agenda.
Got to move the agenda.
Ahead of myself, sorry.
All right, you are. All right. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six-zero with Councilmember Brown excused. So we are now effectively in our agenda on our packet, page seven, moving to item nine, the ordinance emergency adopting emergency zoning regulations for the sitting establishment and operation of temporary tent encampments. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Bird, seconds. Any discussion?
I'm going to let him make the amendments.
Mr. Bird.
Ms. Franks, did you have... We had talked about there were some other edits, possibly. Were those as it pertains to...
Yeah, it's in the office. It's back in the office.
I didn't know if there was another copy somewhere missing, because I know I have the document from...
You want me to go get it? I can go get it.
That was my only copy that I gave you of just section O. But I know there were some other minor changes that the sheriff had recommended, and I think Mr. Personius has those if you don't have those. Do you have the language I proposed to section O?
Ms. Brenner's grabbing it.
Yes, yes, we do.
Karen, Ms. Franks, is that this, the orange?
Did it go out in that?
Sheriff's copy.
Yeah, that is the sheriff's.
Oh, that's the sheriff's recommended changes, and then I further changed section O.
I see changes in section O in...
He had changed it, and I changed it a little bit differently. There it is.
All right, so in order to do this, do we need to then make motions that include the sheriff's copy or edits into the ones we're looking at?
Yeah, definitely. And also to use the amendments that I oppose, I propose.
So can we do it just one at a time, I suppose? It would be simple.
We have no motion on the floor right now, except the main...
Main motion.
The main motion.
So I would move to edit section C to remove the site obscuring from the description so that it reads a six-foot-tall fence is required around the perimeter?
I think you mean section four-C.
Yeah, four-C.
So we have a motion, Mr. Sedu?
I second that, but I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That my suggestion is that we should not have a six-foot fence, but a three-foot fence. Having a fence has its own advantage, is that it demarcates the body as well as the neighbors, or there will be, like, once it is there, and even the residents have a boundary that this is there, that three-foot fence is that person driving by, person walking by can see it, and people from in there can also see it. So that's my suggestion, that removing the fence opens the boundaries. People come at night, they may just camp there, especially in summers, and then you have an issue with the neighbors or something, it will actually keep the area demarcated, and everybody knows this is where they are supposed to be, this is where they're not supposed to be. But it does not obscure the vision for the people on the both sides of the fence, or Health Department, any police department, anybody going by.
So procedurally, Mr. Sedu, we have section four-C. The motion was to remove section four-C about fences, your proposal.
No, no, just the site obscuring.
Remove the word "site obscuring."
Removing the word "site."
Site obscuring.
Okay. And you're proposing amendment to change from six? I just want to make specific what the proposed... What your proposal is.
I'm proposing just change the word from six-foot to three-foot and take the words "site obscuring" out.
That has to be a separate motion unless he takes it as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, or if you're willing to take that as an amendment.
No.
I'm guessing that our housing advocates are not...
We're going to hold off on having public comments on this.
That's fine. I mean...
It's hard enough for us to sort this.
That's fine. It's fine with me. I'm just making a suggestion. In my mind, I think it does create that boundary.
So Mr. Bird is not accepting that? Okay. So the motion then is to make sure we got this on section four-C, simply remove the words "site obscuring"?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? That passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused. Okay. Mr. Bird?
I do have a question before I move on to my next kind of change. As far as this, Mr. Personius, I'm curious, the way section three, number C, is written, I read it as if it is a nonprofit and a religious organization are required. Is this... Oh, no, okay, I missed the "or," so I apologize. Never mind. I see that at the end. Earlier today, though, Ms. Lee mentioned that they're able to do it on for-profit land and that there's actually state advantage or tax incentives to a for-profit property owner allowing it on his property without a nonprofit. Can we do that as well?
So we had talked to council right in the past about kind of following the city's lead on this and their process. That process is to first take advantage of the state RCW that allows the religious organizations to operate those facilities. That's what this ordinance would just... That's the RCW, the state's umbrella that it would come under. And in here, also in this ordinance, is a statement that we would then pursue permanent regulations to allow these temporary facilities outside of that RCW, so on private lands that... Right, so that's a separate process.
Okay, got it. So the suggestion is that we move forward with the nonprofit and the religious organizations, and then in the more permanent version, that we'll open it up to private landowners.
Right, right.
All right, thank you. So I would move that in section five, we change the... Encampments may be approved for a period not to exceed 90 days, and the director may grant one 90-day extension to read the encampments may be approved for a period of one year, and the director may grant a one-year extension or extensions of one year.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Ms. Brenner?
Okay. I think there's a simpler way to say it. That's for tent encampments.
This would be for tiny houses.
For tiny... Yeah, for other structures, it would be for two years with the possibility of extensions. I wouldn't put a limit on how many extensions. That should be depending on how they, you know...
Point of clarification, we're using the phrase "tent encampments" as a generic catch-all for tiny houses, whether they're wooden or tent, or is this a specific?
There's other structures, it says.
Yes, as defined and as written, it states temporary tent encampment means a short-term residence facility for a group of people that is composed of tents or other temporary structures as approved by the director. So that would be the tiny homes or tiny villages, other structure, other temporary structures. So it could be tents or tiny homes.
That's what I'm trying to... From Ms. Brenner's point, so when we're talking about section five, when it's talking about temporary tent encampments, that is collectively talking about...
Correct. It makes no distinction. If council wants to make a distinction, that's language you would have to develop carefully and then separate. If you wanted 90 days on tents and a different time period on tiny home villages that were non-tents, that would be separate language you'd have to develop.
90 days for tents and up to two years for other structures with the ability to have extensions.
Okay, I got a motion for one year on the generic phrase "tent encampments" that's collectively referring to tents and other structures, and now we've got another motion. So where are we at in motions?
That was very friendly.
So I'm not opposed to that. I'm just wondering if with the emergency, if we keep it to one year plus, it's essentially an unlimited number of one-year extensions until we get...
Why don't we just say "extensions" instead of "one-year extensions"? If they're doing fine, and I...
How would I... How would we phrase that?
Okay. It would be for up to two years with the ability to have extensions.
Okay, so up to two years with annual extensions?
With extensions. Don't... I wouldn't put a number on it.
This is a six-month emergency moratorium.
I know.
Good point. I just want to weigh in. Council, just to remind you, this is an emergency ordinance. If you want to adopt it tonight, it becomes effective immediately, SEPA-exempt. It's good for six months, but you must hold a public hearing within...
Sixty days.
Sixty days. You've got to hold a public hearing. Remember, the idea is that we're going to later tonight introduce the interim ordinance, which presumably would be the same as you passed tonight and now as the emergency. But we have to perform SEPA on the interim, and then we have to come back with that, hold a public hearing, and then you can adopt that. One idea would be for you, if you wanted to do the emergency as is tonight, give us some direction on some of these issues that might require a little bit of legal analysis or a little bit of word crafting, and we can come back with that with the interim ordinance. That would give you...
I understand.
...good option.
That's a good idea.
I'm concerned...
Ms. Brenner's hand was doing this.
Was waving in his face. Well, that's why I think the closer we have it to what we want tonight, the less work for you guys.
Well, it isn't, because you're making decisions on the fly that we don't really have a chance to review. And so I think it would make sense to adopt it as it is tonight, and we'd have an opportunity to look at good changes before we adopt something more permanent than this.
I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is, by state and federal law, it's allowed. We had the person give that presentation today, and it is certainly allowed in the state of Washington. If we have ordinances that have a problem with this, we need to change those in the interim. And that's why doing it as an emergency with what we want, that's not... I don't think it's substantive, because it's only going to be for how many... Six months?
Sixty days.
Sixty days, whatever. But we should have our intent in here.
Mr. Bird?
So, Ms. Franks, I'm curious if you can elaborate with me on this one, walk it through so I can understand it. Within the emergency ordinance, the emergency ordinance will last 60 days, but it gives 90 days. So it obviously gives more time than what the emergency ordinance lasts, so...
We can extend that.
Right. What it allows is someone to come in while the emergency ordinance is in effect and apply for something, and they'll be able to do it for whatever the law is at the time they apply. And so, you know, if somebody comes in in the next two weeks, they can... They will basically vest to whatever you adopt tonight.
So if we went to one year, what would be the concern with that?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm not saying there is a concern, it's just these are changes that, you know, it's hard when you just make them on the floor, and we don't have a time to talk about them. I was particularly concerned about just saying with extensions, because you definitely have to have some type of objective criteria so the administrator knows when an extension should be issued.
Ms. Brenner, and then I want to follow up.
Oh, you want to go first?
Yeah, actually, I guess we... Right now, we have a motion about amending section five with a couple of sort of rival motions here. We have an alternative that's potentially adopt this, and then in two weeks, you come back to us with the interim ordinance that would have our concerns about section five addressed in that.
Correct.
So one path forward is to maybe dispose of these motions, pass this, which we've already amended in terms of the fence.
We have amended the fence.
That everybody, even the sheriff, wanted to see.
And then have legal and planning come back to us with this clear, we are giving you a sense that 90 days is insufficient, I think, and that there may be some distinction between tents and how tents and encampments and tiny homes are...
He's already been told about that.
If council wants to go that route, it would be good to get your intent clear. One of the other things in our concerns about just granting extensions on the fly is that we still need to... You know, I would want the sheriffs and the health departments and the provide the human services for these facilities to have a chance to just look at that extension, too. And what are other additional criteria? The planning director should have in place in terms of whether or not to approve a one-year extension or whatever the number is. Are there health concerns? Are there security concerns? Are there sheriff's concerns? Are there public safety concerns, so forth? You know, I would want to send that back to those departments, whatever your intent is, and just get their comments on that. The other thing to consider is whether council wants to consider on extending beyond the 90 or 100 days, does council want to have that authority to approve those extensions?
But as far as the motion, are the motioners interested in pursuing those motions or withdrawing them so we can have this discussion about directing staff to deal with section five? Ms. Brenner?
Okay. How about one year and just instead of one extension, just put "extensions"? And that would be depending on whatever you guys come up with.
Well, yeah, but that's... For us to include it in the ordinance tonight, it has to be what you come up with, I think.
Well, that's what I came up with.
And so it...
And it wasn't tonight.
Mr. Bird?
I already knew I wanted to do that.
I'm curious, because you allow for one additional extension in here. What is the criteria that you're using for this? And can't we use the same criteria for the one-year extension?
Well...
Was there criteria even included?
Yeah.
It seemed kind of like it was at your discretion, to be honest, but...
Yes. Which is, again, one, you know, one thing for council to consider is would council rather have that decision-making authority rather than the director?
Being that the nearest that that would occur would be one year from today, if they dropped houses today, we could define that criteria within the next ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. So I'd like to keep my amendment that I suggested, or my motion, to one year with a one-year extension, and then we can address additional changes in the future ordinances. Because I think the cost of moving the facilities is high, so...
I...
Okay.
Okay, so that is the... So the motion right now is... Clerk, have a sense of what the motion is?
Can you read where that was? Quickly.
Okay, section five. It's about halfway down. It says, "Temporary tent encampments may be approved for a period not to exceed 90 days." So that would read, "Temporary tent encampments may be approved for a period not to exceed one year. The director may grant a one-year extension, provided all conditions have been complied with and circumstances associated with the use have not changed."
Ms. Brenner?
Well, I think we should leave the sentence just the way it is and say, "Other structures may be approved for a period not to exceed one year, and the director may grant one-year extension, provided all conditions have been complied with." I don't see how that can be a problem. But...
Okay, but as far as the motion, Mr. Bird, you have just...
She just said the same thing.
No, she's talking about different...
I just separated them. I separated tent encampments from other structures.
Well, I don't think this ordinance even applies to other structures.
Well, it's supposed to...
It only applies to, at this point, this ordinance applies to tent encampment or tents and other temporary structures.
Well, I'm saying I'm splitting them up.
Well, temporary structures, so you want to split up, like, tiny homes from tents?
From tent encampments, yes.
Okay, so we have, again, I want to make sure we know what the motion is. We are... You say you're splitting something. Mr. Bird had a motion. The motion is...
I can make one.
Are you requesting an amendment to Mr. Bird's motion?
Yeah. I would like it to say... Where was that? Temporary tent encampments may be approved for a period not to exceed 90 days. The director may grant one 90-day extension, provided all conditions have been complied with and circumstances associated to the use have not changed. Other temporary structures shall be approved for a period not to exceed one year. The director may grant one-year extension, provided all conditions have been complied with and circumstances associated with the use have not changed. I'm just separating them.
Mr. Bird?
So I'm willing to take that, but instead of "other temporary structures," let's be specific and just say tiny homes.
It doesn't... You've got to be aware that the definition of temporary tent encampment is both tents and temporary structures. So when you first...
I'm changing it.
I just want to make sure we know what the motion is. I will speak against the motion, but I just want to know what the motion is.
All right, whatever.
You would have to come up with a new definition. If we're going to separate them, then you've got to come up with a separate definition for temporary structures. for temporary structures, which we don't.
I want to get this motion moved, and I want to make sure we, I mean, moved as voted on.
Maybe the council can deal with the tent encampment right now, and then deal with other structures after this motion.
Okay.
So, we separate the two into two different motions.
Well, but tent encampment's already there. That's already in there.
And that would be, Councilmember Bird's motion is to make those changes to tent encampments, and once we've disposed of that motion, Barbara, then maybe you can make a motion for your-
So, okay.
That's not-
Okay, we had, we, let's, we have Mr. Bird's motion unamended.
Yeah, so, I think I have a solution to this. The, correct me if I'm wrong, but it reads, "May be approved for a period not to exceed one year." So, we can leave, if we make that change, not to exceed one year, and we let staff know if it is a tent encampment, that we really want it to be less than ninety days, and if it is a tiny home encampment, then we want it to be up to a year. We want it to be a year.
That's what my motion-
And then we can actually work that into the next ordinance more, with more clarity.
About just adding a clause? I got it, okay.
Let's just, I guess I'm trying to, we have a couple options here. One is, we deal with Mr. Bird's motion, and then we proceed in terms of direction we want to give to staff. Okay, so, speaking to Mr. Bird's motion.
Yes.
Ms. Brenner?
For any amendment? If it said, temporary tent encampments, all that, you know, "Provided that tiny home, tiny homes may be approved for a period not to exceed one year, the director may grant one, one-year extension, provided all, you know..."
I think, yeah, go ahead. So, I think, just try to think of this as the first step. This is just the first step, putting your toe in the water on this. Second step is going to be, in a couple of weeks, when we bring back the interim ordinance, it's going to have that language fully fleshed out, and we're going to have, we'll have dual definitions. We'll define temporary structures separately from tent encampments, and we can address and treat them separately in those issues. That's, would be a lot cleaner way to do it.
Okay.
Ms. Brenner, you've proposed another amendment.
Well, wait a minute, I got a, I have a question for Mark. I specifically asked you about this. You said there, on the other structures, there was no ninety-day limit. Did I misunderstand you?
They are, they are, they, there's no differentiation in this ordinance between tent encampments and tiny home encampments. They are just called tent, temporary tent encampments. Just, it's just word language. So, if you want to separate them out, we get that, let us know that, but that's something we should address in the interim ordinance. This is just the first step.
And I can't address it in the emergency-
You'd have to come up with a definition for temporary structures other than tents.
What if I just said tiny homes?
You have to have a definition for it. There's no definition for it in this ordinance. So, what is it, you know? And I can't recommend it.
Like what you saw when you went out there.
Mr. Sedu's been waiting to talk, but I want to make sure we, this amendment is-
Yeah, I just, I just want to talk about this. I think I hear what Mr. Presonius is saying, that if you look at the Section Three definitions, right now, as an emergency ordinance, he said that there is no distinction-
Page, where?
Page three sixty-six, Section Three A. It says that a temporary tent encampment means short-term residence facility for a group of people that is composed of tents or other temporary structures. We are working on a emergency ordinance to be implemented tonight, so that tomorrow morning, somebody can take it, application, and apply for that. That's one part. The second part is, in two weeks or three weeks, we will come up with interim ordinance, this as life of only sixty days, but we do that today.
And, and can I add something? If somebody did apply during the next two weeks-
Yeah.
-and then the law was broadened later-
Yeah, and then they-
-we would let them take advantage-
They get the benefit.
...of the broadened law.
Exactly.
Yeah.
They get that benefit.
Right.
They're not covered by it.
Right.
So, what I'm saying is, that in the tent, the understanding is, is tent fifty square feet, hundred square feet? Like, we listened to Lehigh, that, okay, they are under twelve-by-ten or hundred-twenty square feet. Like, there are a lot of questions we have to answer. And tiny home, like, okay, tiny home can be five-hundred square feet. Tiny home can be two stories high. Tiny home can be only ten-by-ten. We understand that, but I think that it'll be wise for us to take that little two-week time and define that, if there is a lot, it is so many, if it is a lot, it's twenty-five-hundred square feet or four-thousand square feet, how many tiny homes should go in there, because they're going to be in a year, right? Like, there are little nuances. We need to do that, rather than doing it on fly, put it in there, and then there are gaping holes in our own wording. So, I favor that, that we go with the amendment suggested by Mr. Bird, and, and do it for tent encampments, the way the definitions are. Make an emergency ordinance right now, so that this is out of the way, and that allows us to work on some of the definitions and differentiations, and bring that back in the interim, which is actually for six months. And then interim can be made permanent, code changes if down the road, whatever, like everybody, everything else. That's the process.
You might have just added something to the motion beyond what Mr. Bird had said when you used the phrase tent, tiny homes. Are you talking just tent?
I'm just saying, there should not be no differentiation or anything tonight. We should leave the way it is.
Ms. Brenner, and then let's move this motion.
Okay. Well, if we can't do something now, I want to make sure what you bring back. I don't want tiny homes to be called temporary tent encampments. I don't even want them to be temporary, because you, you were, you got real good instructions. They got to obey the rules, the laws, whatever. You had that nice, long statement about that. I think it should be leased with the option of re-leasing, as long as it's still, you know, on page two, whatever that was, as long as it still stays, plays by the rules, whatever you had there.
Hey, I will speak against the motion. I share Mr. Bird, and I think everybody's, or most people have spoken, a sense that we want a period longer than ninety days for wooden structures to be called tiny homes, but we don't have those definitions. And if we can dispense with that motion and pass this thing as is, and let staff then come up with some of that language in the interim, I think that would be a cleaner way to do it. So, the motion is, ready to vote on this? The motion is, Mr. Bird's original motion, changing ninety days to a year, I believe, on, on both of those things. Okay? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have the actual emergency ordinance with the amendment to the signed thing in Section Four C. Before we go to that, I want to make sure that-
There's another amendment.
There's another.
There's another amendment?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, do that one first.
But as far as one we just, I think Mark, so in terms of direction to staff, we, you're hearing Mr. Bird and everybody in terms of, there is a need for a definition of tiny homes versus tents and differential time periods.
Yes.
I think we're all good on that. Mr. Bird, you-
What was the count on that vote?
I'm sorry, that's a good point.
Two to two.
It was two, it was Bird and Brenner in favor, and Sedu Donovan, oh, it was three-three then.
Oh, it was three to three.
So, still does not go forward then. So, Blue, Brenner, and Bird in favor, Sedu Donovan, and Buchanan opposed, so it fails three-three. Moving on.
Glad I asked. Okay.
You have to read that.
I'm trying to, just clarify this real quick. So, I think this might be simpler than what it is, but, letter O.
On page three sixty-eight?
Three sixty-eight.
Yep.
Frakes? That's okay. So, am I correct, when I, I'm looking at this, really, that what I see, can't remember if this current log should be made, is the difference is that, really, you just have the, the last sentence removed, status checks through managing agency?
With the orig, well, no, I added some other language about notifying people that law enforcement-
Yeah. It's that paragraph you gave me.
That wasn't in there.
No?
No.
This is what you gave me.
Right.
Okay, that's-
Right, but the language he's talking about, I added language about advising people before they stay there, that they could be subject to, you know, law enforcement making warrant checks.
Okay.
That wasn't in the original. That's, was in response to some case law.
We're just letting them know that if they're going to stay there, that-
The same laws apply to them as if-
The law can be, provided the law enforcement upon request.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to read this and replace O.
This is replacing all of O?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. "The sponsor and the managing agency shall take all reasonable and legal steps to obtain verifiable identification information, to include full name and date of birth from current and prospective encampment residents, and use that identification to obtain sex offender and warrant checks from appropriate agencies. The sponsor and the managing agency shall keep a log of names and dates of all people who stay overnight in the temporary tent encampment, and shall advise prospective encampment residents that this log will be available upon request to law enforcement agencies."
Deleting the remaining language.
There's a little bit more.
Yep, I got it. So, just double checking. So, persons who have active warrants, or who are required to register as sex offender, as a sex offender, are prohibited from the encampment's location. Do you need to give this?
You better take it back.
Yeah. So, essentially, we're just saying, hey, if you're going to stay the night there, you're going to be under the same rules, and then we're removing the last sentence, which says, "Status checks of current encampment residents shall be routinely performed by officers," so that's not a part of it.
That's not part of it.
And the current law provided, yeah, isn't a part of it, so...
I will say I had trouble tracking what the changes are.
You did?
Yeah.
You had trouble?
So, if you-
I, okay.
If you go to the section O, and just cross out the, the last three lines, essentially.
Okay.
So, status checks of current encampments? That's the one that changes. And then the other one was-
The word, and it started right.
Why didn't she read it to everybody?
Yeah, Karen, we may need that back.
Yeah.
Sorry. It was the same as it is in here, until you get to a certain place, and then you put in-
Of the sponsor.
Say it on the mic. That's okay.
The first sentence is identical as is in the original version. The second sentence, I, the second, the second phrase is different. It reads, "The sponsor and managing agency shall keep a log of names and dates of all people who stay overnight in the temporary tent encampment." That's the same, but it's changed to say, "And shall advise prospective encampment residents that this log will be available upon request to law enforcement agencies." The next sentence is the same, and then the last sentence is deleted.
Deleted, okay.
So, Mr. Buchanan and Councilmember Blue, it might be more confusing if you're looking at the sheriff's version, because he has other edits that, I'd look at the version in the-
I was able to steer through that. But you're right, you're right.
You have a second.
I got it.
No, I say, can I do this?
We're ready. Let's vote.
Weren't there a couple other changes, just terminology that the sheriff had asked?
But that's not, let's do it as a separate motion. Oh, I just want to get this-
Okay, on sec, so those changes have proposed by Mr. Bird, seconded by me. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused. Mr. Bird? I just assume you had another one.
Well, what was the other that the sheriff wanted to read?
That's, he's working on this.
I move that we replace Section M with the suggested Section M in the orange-
Oh, yeah, okay.
...document, or addendum, that was provided by the sheriff's office, to read, so it will read, "The sponsor and the managing agency shall designate points of contact and provide contact information, twenty-four-hour accessible phone contact to the," we're excluding patrol operations commander for, and replacing it with, "Chief criminal deputy of the Waukam County Sheriff's," or his/her designee. "At least one designated point of contact shall be on duty at all times. The names of, uh, excuse me, the names of the on-duty points of contact shall be posted onsite daily, and their contact information shall be provided to the Waukam County Sheriff's Office as described above."
Second. Terms of late, only terminology. Anybody's got that in the orange version? That's exactly the same changes.
I read it, I don't, oh, here's my orange version.
That's very easy to track. Any discussion on those changes? And again, to the clerk, we're getting that off page two of the orange dealie, number M.
I just seconded.
Okay.
Yeah.
Didn't you second it?
He can second it. I seconded it.
Okay.
Any discussion on those changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So, that passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused.
I think that's everything, right?
Okay. So, we now have a amended version of the emergency ordinance before us, and with direction having been given on other items to staff, what are the wishes on this? Should we-
Move approval?
Move approval, yeah.
All right, and this would be a roll call vote, and I lost my script, because we moved around, so...
Doug Donovan?
Yes.
Is that Paul's who?
Yes.
Tim Blue?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused.
Yeah! Thank you!
Now, for the exciting consent agenda from Finance and Administrative Services Committee. Thank you all for-
Let's take a five-minute break. These guys deserve it.
Yeah, actually, five minutes to Mr.-
Before, hey, you guys, before you leave, I just want to, I know this is something you've kind of looked for, but the, thank you, homes now, for being persistent and coming up with, with a creative solution that has good data and has good examples behind it. I would like to attribute all of this to, to your organization and the work you're doing, and I appreciate that.
You have more work to do. Thanks. Okay, do you have a five-minute recess?
No, but we, no, he's not going to, he said five-minute break. Now I can take this off.
I just want to say, thank you for that. Thank you for acknowledging us, and thank you for your hard work on this. I know it's been contentious at times, but we got here. Now, can you give me some land?
That's what I'm saying, we have more work to do.
Well, on your five-minute break, you can run over to your shower truck and look at it if you haven't-
I think I need a shower now.
I know.
Aw, that was so mean.
Good job.
You know, this made my- You know, this made my-
These have been considered in committee earlier, and we have items one through ten-
Yes.
From the finance, I have a motion to, from Mr. Sudut, okay?
Yes, let me, let me, let me just say that, that these items received a two-zero vote with Mr. Rod Brown excused, and I move approval for items one through ten.
Okay, any discussion on that?
I, let's vote.
Alright, uh, this is a, um, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no, that passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused.
Okay.
Other items from finance, Mr. Sudut?
The other items from Finance and Administrative Services Committee are, number one, ordinance amending Wacom County budget eighth request in the amount of forty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-seven-eight. It received a two-zero vote with Mr. Brown excused.
Do you have a motion for that?
I, I so move approval.
Okay, and that is a roll call vote. Any discussion? We're ready to vote.
Tim Ballou?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Is that Paul Suhu?
Yes. Okay, the, so this passes six-zero?
That passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused.
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
The next item is the ordinance amending ordinance two-zero-one-seven dash zero-four-six, establishment of the Triage Center Expansion Fund and the establishment of a project-based budget for the Triage Center Expansion Project to add one million dollars of expenditure authority to the original project budget of three hundred thousand dollars for a total amended project budget of one-point-three million dollars, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-seven-nine. This received a two-zero vote in the committee with Mr. Brown ex- uh, excused, and I so move for approval.
We have a motion and a second.
We don't need a second.
We don't need a second now to committee, I don't know, I'll just keep you down to your toes. Okay, any discussion on that? This is also an ordinance roll call vote.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Is that Paul Suhu?
Yes.
Tim Ballou?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
And that passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused.
The next item is the ordinance authorizing an interfund loan to continue financing of Central Plaza Building, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-eight-zero. This received a two-zero vote in the committee, uh, with Mr. Brown excused, and I so move for approval.
Discussion on this? And that is an ordinance for a roll call vote?
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Is that Paul Suhu?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Barbara Brenner?
Yes.
Tim Ballou?
Yes.
Other items from finance?
The next item is the resolution authorizing the county executive through Parks Director, Michael McFarland, to make application to enter into a grant agreement between Wacom County and the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for funding through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for the Maple Falls Park Trailhead Development in the amount of three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-eight-four. This received a two-zero vote in the committee with Mr. Brown excused, and I so move for approval.
Any discussion? This is a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None, Mr. Brown's excused, that passes six-zero.
The next item is the resolution authorizing the county executive through Parks Director, Michael McFarland, to make an applica, make application and enter into a grant agreement between Wacom County and the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for funding through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for the Lake Wacom Park Trailhead and Trail Development, one-eight dash two-zero-three-five, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-eight-five. This also received a vote of two-zero in the committee with Mr. Brown excused, and I so move for approval.
Discussion on this item? Alright, and that is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None, that passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused.
Okay, the next item is resolution authorizing the county executive through Parks Director, Michael McFarland, to make application and enter into a grant agreement between Wacom County and the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for funding through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for the Lookout Mountain Forest Preserve Trail Development, eighteen dash two-zero-three-four, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-eight-six. This also received a vote of two to zero for approval with Mr. Brown excused, and I so move for approval.
Okay, item seven, any discussion on that? Mr. McFarland's been busy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None, that passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused. Item eight.
The next item is resolution authorizing the county executive through Parks Director, Michael Mc, Michael McFarland, to make application and enter into a grant agreement between Wacom County and the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for funding through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program for the Birch Way Beach Park Development, one-eight dash one-nine-nine-two, in the amount of five-hundred-thousand dollars, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-eight-seven. Received a vote of two-zero for approval, and Mr. Brown excused, I so move for approval.
And this is item seven, I might have just skipped ahead, so, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Alright, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that passes six-zero with Mr. Brown excused. Now we're on item eight, which is the red-
Yeah.
Thing.
So let me read the resolution first, then we can discuss that. Resolution of the Wacom County Council updating the appendix of the two-zero-one-five Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, CEDS, AB two-zero-one-eight dash one-eight-eight. We asked for some further information from the administration, which we did receive. That's the red color one, and it did receive a vote of two-zero, but for the clarification, I just wanna say I'm pleased to see that the target growth for family wage employment Wacom County, the very first item which has been added, was not there before, is employ innovative techniques to recruit and develop a diversified mix of businesses for a broader economic base starting a forward-focused marketing strategy to solicit inward investments from targeted industry sectors that are forecast to provide growth in type of family wage jobs that the community is well-positioned to support, and this will be funded for a million dollars for seven years with EDI funding. It's just a project, it's just a placeholder, but it wasn't there before and has been added, and the other change is that the new jail is still there, but the word La Bounty Road has been taken out from both new jail and sheriff's office. But these are the, these are the list of projects which counties and all the other cities in our county have on their books or their wish list, and this is a record which different cities and counties submits to the state as well as to the federal government for whatever programs suitable to get grants or monies, or these list items can be changed, added, or subtracted at any time by the council. And this list is maintained by council of governments, and, and we received that list from them.
Ms. Brenner?
Okay, any discussion, you guys continue.
Ms. Brenner, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I can't help myself, I'm definitely supporting this, but this whole thing about target growth of family wage employment, and, you know, it, it just sounds so wonderful, so touchy-feely, then what are we doing trying to really reduce the ability of the industries at a cherry point? And you can say you're not, but if, if they're not allowed to grow in the way we want them to grow, with clean, you know, good regulations that aren't like the garbage that comes our way with acidic air and currents from Asia, because they don't have good regulations. I mean, everybody wants to feel good, this is feel-good language, but it flies in the face of what some on the county are doing, so, I had to say it, sorry.
Okay, so, Mr. Sudut, you referring to this as a placeholder?
I so move for approval.
Okay. So the differences between what we had in our packet this morning is the estimated one million per annum on targeted family wage growth employment and changing Wacom County on the La Bounty Road to Wacom County in terms of the jail location. I'm, I might have missed this discussion earlier. So the, is that this is a goal, is it not committing us to a budget priority, is it?
No, it, yeah, this has no priorities, the list is just a list, and it can be changed or it can be taken off, or new items can be added, but this is a list which is needed by council of governments, because suppose there's a federal funding or Department of Transportation comes up with a billion dollars to give it to different states or western states, then they need to submit a list of projects on our books, and then this are the lists which help the different entities to apply for those programs or take certain projects out of that, they say, oh, this is, we have already been planning for this, and please give us money for this.
Any further discussion on this, item eight?
Mr. Chair, can I clarify that the information in the red packet is to substitute for what's in the council packet?
Yes, with the, and the-
What she said.
Yes, the red, yes, the red, we are voting on the red-
We are voting on this-
Substitution item.
Okay. Through I's, I, yes.
Any discussion?
Um, wait a minute.
So, yeah, to make sure all council members, the, the-
Those, that's the only changes, were those things?
There's three changes, there's the adding of a targeted growth of family wage employment project, and then changing the name of the jail location. On page numbers.
Rest us, we're from the governs.
My understanding is the red version was merely a clarification.
Well, there's a-
It isn't the substitute version, it's, it was only the old version, this is the old version, we're not voting on this.
I thought we were.
I thought, okay, let's make sure we got this clear.
I thought this was just clarification of changes from last year to this year, because the date on this is two, twenty-seventeen.
But these were new-
Yes, but these items were not on the list which was in our package.
Oh, okay.
Items in, they were not there.
I got you, I got you.
So they are now added or modified, like the jail location had a La Bounty word in there, now it's just Wacom County.
Get it.
So that, that's why we are adopting this list instead of the list in our packet earlier in the day.
So, Jill, so it is the, we are, I think everyone knows that, we are voting on the red-
The red.
Okay. Mr. Schroder?
Tyler Schroder, Deputy Executive, uh, earlier today in committee, there was a discussion about the 2018 SEDS list, which was developed through coordination with all of the cities and the county, provided to the COG. Bob Wilson at the COG developed that, uh, report. In committee this morning, there was an ask about what had changed. We actually didn't have a redlined version of it, and so we provided the 2017 version. The changes from La Bounty Road to Wacom County, I remember that discussion last year, there's no real change to that, and so there's no real deviation one way or the other. The discussion on the million dollars, I don't think it's all that appropriate to be located in the SEDS list, but there is no change one way or the other, and there has been some additional dollars that's been budgeted to go to the Port of Belingham for economic development. It's not really appropriate on the SEDS list, but I'll let council kinda make a decision how they want to as it relates to-
But it makes it sound like-
Mr. Bird?
But it makes it sound like there could be care.
Are you suggesting that we're not to vote on this one, but to vote on what's in the packet? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Uh, yeah. The information in the red one was just for additional information, but I...
That's what I thought.
Yes.
All right.
But there, if council so chooses to vote on the red, there will be no real harm or different intent associated with it, I guess, is the other word.
Let's do the red.
Okay. I had misunderstood. I thought this was a substitute.
It's just additional information.
What are the wishes of the...
That's why it says additional.
Ms. Burt.
Do it. I'd like to vote on what's in the packet as that's what everyone has seen up to this point. It makes it easy. It's not really...
Okay.
So, we had a motion where it wasn't clear if we were, the motion for Mr. Sado coming out of finance was the packet version. So, that is actually, the motion on the floor is the packet version then, is there a wish? And we got the clarification on the red line version from staff. Any discussion about voting on the version on the list that begins on page 60 in our main packet?
I just was going to say that at least one of the item on there for new jail and sheriff's department still stays La Bounty Road. I rather change it to Watcom County because that's the really truth of it.
It already is.
So, this is on page 6-0 of our packet. So, I would like that we should accept this version, changing that.
So, there's a motion to change the word La Bounty Road, where it appears twice on page 60 to Watcom County. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. So, the packet version with the amendment where it says new jail and new sheriff's office, changing La Brani Road, La Brani Road to Watcom County, Watcom County, would be the only change here. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And that passes 6-0 with Mr. Brown excused. We have disposed of item nine.
No, that was the amendment you just voted on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just learning this.
It's okay. We're working. You have to be full-time chair.
Yeah, no. All right. So, now we have the main SEDS list. Any discussion on that? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving this?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
None? That passes 6-0 with Mr. Brown absent. And now I can say we have disposed of item nine, which was the emergency ordinance. We've already dealt with that. That brings us to council appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. The Business Advisory Committee, page 373 in our packet, we have 30, I'm sorry, 13 vacancies. Ms. Brenner.
I have a suggestion. I would really like to see this vote postponed because I had some people that didn't have time to get back to me yet, and I would like to use that time to...
Is that your motion?
There's a motion to post...
Yeah, I was giving my motion and my reason why.
I second it because I've been contacted too.
Okay.
I think there's a sense that, so, two weeks to our next meeting?
That'd be good.
Okay. So, we have a motion to postpone item one, council appointments, the Business and Commerce Advisory Committee to our next meeting. Any discussion on that? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 6-0 with Mr. Brown excused. Okay, introduction items. We have two introduction items. An ordinance to establish parking restrictions. Sorry?
Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. The motion on the appointment was simply to hold in council for two weeks. If you want to accept additional appointments, you might want to make a motion to extend the deadline.
Uh, that's an interesting discussion.
No. That wasn't, I don't want to do it, and it wasn't my motion.
Don't want to do the extension of...
No. It's hard enough to get a hold of these people.
No additional... Okay. Any discussion on whether, any further discussion on whether we should entertain additional nominations and extend the deadlines?
No.
No.
Okay. Thought you were coming up for that. No.
You might have. Okay. So, I think, did we need to re-vote? Everything was understood?
No. That was the understanding. Just postpone what we've got.
All right, introduction items. We have two introduction items. An ordinance establishing parking restrictions within 10 feet of U.S. mailboxes and on all county roads and an ordinance adopting interim zoning regulations for the siting establishment operation of temporary tent encampments, which is why Mr. Personius is up here.
Correct. Counsel, I would request that you not introduce item number two.
What?
Because you're going to come back to us...
We're going to come back at your next meeting with a new one to introduce.
Oh, in two weeks.
Given the direction that you have just received.
For two weeks, I'll trust you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burt?
Hope to introduce item one?
Actually, let's, we have a second for that, and then we can get to this one.
Okay, so...
But, no, we haven't, the motion is introduce item one, and then this is item two. So, let's dispose of item one.
Let's do item one first, when you ask.
Mr. Sado seconds that motion?
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor reducing item one on mailbox parking restrictions?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No. That passes 6-0 with Mr. Brown.
That was so hard.
Brown. Okay. And now we're on item two. Mr. Burt?
Item two.
We come back in three weeks, right?
Correct.
So, originally, we talked, that was enough time for you to do the SEPA review on it.
It will be now.
So...
Okay.
If we don't...
I'll trust you for three weeks. Sorry.
Well, yeah.
So, you're going to bring, you're going to do the SEPA review, and then you'll bring back a new version that has that completed for the...
Correct.
Okay.
It may be that the comment period will expire on the night of the hearing, which will be your last meeting in July.
Is that okay?
And that'll be fine.
That's legal.
Yep.
Maybe. Yes? She was walking up.
I'm sorry it's late. I, not as late as it usually is.
Not as late as we've been sometimes.
But I, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that after the changes are made, it will have to be introduced before it's adopted two weeks later.
Right. So, we'll get it back to you through, I think it's July 10th is your next meeting. It'll be introduced. You can introduce it that night and then hearing and decision on the July 24th, I think, will be your last meeting of the summer.
Mr. Sado?
Mr. Personius, I have a couple of items. I just want to make a suggestion that on this ordinance, that when we talk about tents, maybe there should be some kind of definition, you know, the size of the tent. You did mention more than 300 square feet. They must use this material. But for this, like more to the tiny homes, are we talking 10 by 12? Are we talking 10 by 30? Are we talking double-story? Not? And another thing is the common buildings for, say, for cooking or for laundry or something. If, like, this is what we learned today from Lehigh, right? And I would suggest that if you can add certain things to that, that this is some kind of range for those. The other part is that on a lot, that, you know, city lot is, say, 4,000 square feet lot, right? And how many tiny homes you can have on that? Like, this is, these are the things which were not really clear, which will be easier to manage if we know and define that right now, that you can have no more than so many square feet.
I'm not, I don't support putting a limit on that.
You can have, like, 300, you know, right next to each other. Like, all I'm saying is, can we have some kind of definition on that? We have 100 people. But 100 people, if the lot there received by somebody says, you can do it on my, it's only 2,000 square feet. Are you going to put 100 people on there?
Well, as written, that would be the director's decision.
Right. And you've got to obey city laws, too.
It's hard to say exactly square footage and all those kinds of things. I can look at, the city is working on advancing their regs. We will look at those. We can talk to them and see if we can glean anything from that that would help with this interim ordinance. But remember, we're still going to be producing or looking and developing permanent regs, and that's when I think we are going to get to that level of specificity that you seek.
Yeah.
This is simply to just sort of clarify a little bit. And from what I've heard in my direction would be to separate and to make distinct...
Tent encampments.
Definitions of tent encampments and tiny home encampments and then treat them differently in terms of duration and extension. Is that, is that the general direction?
Keep it simple.
And if we are not going to introduce this ordinance, we just simply don't act on this one then? Okay. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Burt?
Mr. Personius, you don't have to come back up. The, I just want to say thank you very much for getting this so quickly and to Tyler and the rest of the staff. I do appreciate it.
I'll take Tyler out next time. We'll get him on board. Okay.
All right. Thanks, our awesome staff. Committee reports.
Okay.
I think Natural Resource Committee is up first. That was me almost exactly 12 hours ago this morning. Mr. McFarland gave us a report, quarterly report, I guess, update on senior centers and the Parks Department's goals and progress on capital projects. We then moved on to committee of the whole, where we discussed comp plan amendments relating to Cherry Point, and we're continuing to give staff direction on creating an ordinance or code changes relating to conditional uses for major projects at Cherry Point. Finance Committee, Mr. Sado?
Yes. We had a brief report from county executive and the auditor's office. Good news is that they will be paying for the postage stamps for primary and general election this year, and the state is going to reimburse up to $55,000.
I thought it was for boxes, too.
Yeah, they will be, the boxes will be open, too, but whatever the expenses are for people who mail it in, they don't have to put the stamps. The county will bear the cost, and state is going to reimburse that at least for 2018. And that's it.
Okay. Committee of the whole, we had an executive session on a pending litigation regarding the ACLU suit involving our jail.
I don't think you need to get into that.
That's all I can say about that, I guess. It was information. No decisions were made. As committee of the whole, we had a discussion with the Health Department after that. We had actually great presentations on water system issues, richard Argus from the Department of Health, Roger Almscar, Bob Carmichael, Dave Olson, and Gary Stoica and John Wolpers gave us some great information on trying...
John Wolpers.
I said John. Trying to define timely and reasonable expectations about water service. Planning Committee?
We had a presentation today from Sharon Lee, the executive director of the Low Income Housing Institute, otherwise known as Lehigh. She gave us a really nice presentation on what they're doing with tiny home villages in multiple different counties as well as the data that comes from that. I thought what was interesting was the scenario that about 30% of the people that they've worked with in tiny home encampments have moved on to full-time housing. That's not, it was not low-income housing or alternatives. It was full-time housing. And then 25% had moved into employment and actual jobs. And that in one situation, they had a tiny home village. When it was enacted, it reduced crime in the neighborhood by 30% because they were helping with it. So, all in all, I thought the data and the information was fantastic. The guidelines that they're using, I think, make a lot of sense, and I'm looking forward to moving forward with it.
It's a great presentation. Ms. Brenner?
I just have to add, she gave the most incredible presentation anyway. I mean, she had so many facts, and it all points to tiny homes are an incredible solution. It's very positive. It's reduced crime. It's, oh, the neighbors, when they were going to move it after an extension on one place, the neighbors got together and said, no, we don't want them moved. We love them here. I mean, it's just been so positive, and she was a great presenter, too. So, if anybody didn't make that meeting today, you can get it online, I suppose, on the council website, the audio. It was just wonderful.
Is the presentation online, too?
The audio will be. I don't know about the...
Yeah.
The slide deck that she provided?
We could get it.
You can hear the audio. I think you can...
We could ask her for the slides.
Oh, the slides you wouldn't probably get, but the audio, even without the slides, the audio...
Are there items? I'm sorry.
I just want to make a comment. Stoney Byrd said something that really touched me in the sense that while we are talking about tiny homes and low income and other things, one thing we should keep in mind, I grew up in a very poor country. And I see America from a different perspective because I was 26, 27 years old when I came here, and it's really that if I was a child, I come here, it's a different perspective. What we are seeing is with this movement to go tiny homes and everything, it's a great thing. We need to solve this problem, but there are two things to look at. If we have, we know there are structural issues with our economic structure, there's one way that we accept it and get used to that, and we become that country. Or we have as American spirit that if there are anomalies in our economic system, not that we should just accept it, we should make an effort to change it, that we maintain our status as one of the most prolific nation in the world and which looks after its people. I think there are subtle differences in here, not that I'm against tiny homes and anything, but this is something is that if we start accepting that norm, you get in that and you accept it, and that becomes a norm. I think America can do better than that. We have the resources and ability to do better than that, and we, with American spirit, should look into and change those conditions which are forcing us to these kind of solutions.
Response to council members' updates?
I'm sorry, I can't help it. And maybe I misunderstood what you said, but I happen to think tiny homes are wonderful, and they should be not only accepted, but they should be encouraged in more and more places.[1653.53]